That's how I use it.
Because Macon County, it's eighteen to twenty year olds been able to do it there for over almost fifteen years. Because Rodger Park, the high school kids did it there for.
This started back in the eighties?
I mean, I think Macon County only requires, so I think they have to get like, it's almost like a work permit release.
Like I said, we're shooting for the twenty year olds, I'm not, you know, because we're open till one in morning, you know, I'm. But I would try to ring if you were on the bar at fourteen, so, you know.
The, on the Illinois Liquor Control Commissioner's website, they said that municipalities have ordinances specifying ages for selling, serving, pouring, drawing and opening. So it's up to the municipality to order all of them, according to the commissioner's website.
That is true. So, I mean, what I was thinking was having the discussion and then moving to an ordinance for next month. Those were my intentions. I know there's been finance and people, so maybe you have questions about, you know, having somebody in the bar after nine o'clock. You can't be in there if you're, you know, under the age of twenty-one and then having somebody working when they're eighteen.
And it's the state specific, I mean, that's the first line there.
Yeah, I know, I was just saying.
Yeah, but I understand what you're saying, but that's how the state words it. You can serve it, but you can't drink it.
And I have talked to the cops, I've talked to Jackson Pryor, he said, you know, it will be, if we go this route, it'll be monitored. Everything, anything that you.
I mean, I talked to Brian earlier today and we're both okay with it. I mean, I could see maybe more or few issues, but we've talked about ways to handle that, so I, we don't have an issue with it at all, so.
So you guys are.
Do we have ordinance now?
We don't, we don't have anything, that's why we wanted to discuss it, because there was questions made in finance and we didn't have any of the borrowers here, so.
I didn't think there was.
Yeah, no, so. So we'll just. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so if there's no ordinance, could I have been having a twenty year old selling?
No, 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 there's no ordinance to change it right now, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought you said there was an ordinance.
No, 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 there's no, there's an ordinance for twenty-one year olds, it's just to change it.
That's what it is.
We did not do, we do have an ordinance for twenty-one.
Okay, gotcha.
Oh, I thought you were referring to make an ordinance to vote on, so not.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, no. And so originally, the plan was to have an ordinance to vote on, but then during finance, the members didn't want to do that, they wouldn't have the discussion, so. That's why I changed it.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 that's okay, I'm sorry if it didn't come out.
So this would be for any establishment, it'd be for the gas stations and any places.
If it's got a liquor license, yes.
You can have that when it's done by next month and vote on it?
Yes, we can. And then, so then if you get the ordinance next month and vote on it and it passes, does that instantaneously go in, or what would be the delay?
Yeah, it'll go in as soon as I sign it, so I'll have five days to sign it, but yeah.
So pretty, pretty big, so it's not as long to wait or filing or anything, so once it's done, voted good, then we can.
She can, so if I sign it Wednesday night, she can start on Thursday.
So it goes in. All right, you guys have anything else you want to talk about on that?
So then everybody has to go through the Basset training? Is there a fee to go through that?
Yeah, we pay it, but yeah, it's like twenty-two, thirteen, fifteen.
I thought you were gonna say thirteen hundred.
It's pretty intense training. It's good.
Hi, thank you guys, we'll get that prepared and we'll have it on the agenda for October. Up next, we get into the Noddy Pine, we'll have a motion to approve a tip application for the Noddy Pine. Um, Renee has been doing some work to her building, so we're going to agree to do it out of finance, finance to give her five thousand dollar grant. We will follow up with you to make sure that you know you spend everything wisely. So anything you want to ask? Well, we, we had an issue, we had an issue, so.
No, I have all my receipts ready to go, I'll just bring them to Janet like last time.
Yes.
Okay, awesome, and then Troy has to sign, so then he'll sign it all up this week.
Right, so we see a motion to approve the tip application for five thousand dollars for the Noddy Pine.
Like a motion.
Okay, one of you has one second.
I'll second it.
All right, perfect, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve sidewalks for Chestnut Street. Hutchins Excavating came in at the lowest bid, so kind of give you a little bit of an idea of what we're doing, the scope of work is to saw and cut concrete, concrete in front of Barnes's. Replace, remove and replace the concrete approximately thirteen feet by thirty-seven feet. The other thing is that we're gonna saw and cut in front of Watts Hair, remove and replace the concrete approximately fourteen feet to forty-eight feet. And we're also gonna call, saw and cut in front of the laundromat, we're gonna remove and replace the concrete and add an ADA mat. Also number five, we're gonna do, uh, uh, remove and replace the sidewalk by the laundromat for approximately four foot by fifty-five foot. And then we're gonna also remove and replace and add an ADA mat by moving lumber. So that would be for a total of twenty-seven thousand dollars. No, it'd be eleven thousand on it. I don't have my number. No. Yeah, twenty-seven thousand, because we're doing a separate for the Casey's stuff. So see the motion to approve the sidewalks for Chestnut Street, please?
And this is for Hutchins, right?
Yes, for Hutchins, yes.
Compared to the R and V?
R and V, R and V was a little bit higher, so Hutchins was cheapest.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes. Thank you, I'm next to a motion to approve a call for sidewalks at Casey's. This was the big one, remove the saw from the corner of Holgrove and Sarah Street, east of the Casey's General Store, reform and pour sidewalk from the corner of Holgrove and Sarah Street. Four foot by four hundred and fifty foot total foot. And, uh, get that going so that people will be able to walk to Casey's.
Which paper are you on?
I'm on the Hutchins.
I'm reading the bid.
I wonder which bid is it?
Uh, it's the fifteen thousand five hundred, it's bid number one.
And is it, did anybody, did anybody else bid on it?
Yes, Hutchins did, and it came in at sixteen thousand dollars.
No.
I mean, I'm sorry, uh, R and V Peters did it at sixteen thousand.
Okay, all right, all right.
So Hutchins was cheaper.
Okay, gotcha, sorry, I was trying to follow along.
That's okay.
How far is that sidewalk running in? Four hundred foot.
Four hundred fifty foot.
Four fifty.
All right, is there any motion to approve the sidewalk to Casey's, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussions? Roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes. All right, and then up next, we also have a sidewalk to approve to Dollar General, we're gonna be using ARPA funds for this, this would be six thousand dollars. Cora's Enterprises Caleb came in with this one, and this is a rock pathway from the subway to the Dollar General. Six hundred foot of CA six with a felt paper under it, uh, for six thou, six thousand dollars, please, we'll be using the ARPA funds out of that that we have set aside.
I'll make the motion.
Is, uh, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Workman?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes. Okay, thank you. All righty, up next, the motion to approve the purchase of a hydrant not to exceed five thousand dollars using ARPA funds out of the, out of the water fund.
Do we have to pay to work on that?
No.
No?
No, Jack just gave us a price.
He goes, yeah, not to, not to exceed five thousand on it.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? Roll call please.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes. All righty, next we have a motion to approve fifteen thousand dollars for the one hundred and twenty water, uh, for development of service line material inventory from the lead service grant. This is all paid for out of the lead service grant that we've gotten, so we see a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
All righty, up next, we've got discussion on the phone system, uh, some of yous probably know, we've been having some problems with our nineteen ninety phones. We have. So Janet has included in your packet, one thing that we can have is a CTI hosted phone system, Angel does need a phone. So we'll be replacing the phones for Janet, Angel and Tanya, I do not need one, nobody ever calls, I have a city cell phone. And, um, so that would be for a hundred and four dollars, A five cents total, but that would be a month that we would have to pay for it. So if you want, anything you want to add onto that, Janet?
Um, no, that's three phones, and then we can add the internet if we choose later. So when equipment's like four hundred and twenty some dollars.
Yeah, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents, but you, it's on the second page.
Yeah, the one-time equipment.
One-time equipment, yeah.
And that's labor included to come more so. And that would give us two thousand two hundred.
The back page says it has fiber vis, fiber business internet for fifty-nine dollars.
That is a different quote, we have to wait till they are up with CTI to get the internets.
Yeah, we have to wait for them to actually be here.
And that is unhosted.
So will that, would that be an additional fifty-nine dollars, the internet would be an additional fifty-nine dollars on top of the one oh four eighty-five a month?
Right, that's, well, that's for fifty days, we currently have a hundred. So and that'll be a hundred and nineteen dollars from when we choose, if we choose them. And they want a two-year contract.
Will your phone number stay the same?
Yes.
Phone number stay the same, yeah, we'll just have a phone that'll work.
Having a lot of issues, I mean, somebody will call and Janet will pick it up and it'll be busy.
And they can have it done with a couple of two.
Yeah, just in a matter of a couple, yeah, a couple of weeks, yeah, I thought that's what you said. So if you want to go with the hundred and four eighty-five? Best one, I think that's the best one to go with.
Is this the only one we have?
That's the only one we have, CTI is the place to work with. Yeah, um, and Deckard said he's been the contact, he's called us. And he basically, the other option that we thought about possibly going, but it's gonna be a little bit costlier, is giving them city cell phones. Which costs even more, so that's why, and, and if we did that, the cell phones, because they can still get the same city number.
So will all three cell phones have the three seven four two number?
Well, if we're talking to Darren, they would have whatever number we have, yeah, so. But, uh, but you're looking at, compared to a hundred and four, you're probably looking at fifty bucks a piece, so I think this is the best, best one.
So we just put that on the for the agenda next one?
Yeah, well, we can go ahead and do it, I'm just gonna purview it, so I just want to let you guys know about it.
We'll leave the action to approve that too.
Yeah, action.
We do have action, so yes, we'll make a motion. Thank you guys. All right, we have a motion to approve the CTI hosted phone system for a hundred and four eighty-five a month?
I'll make the motion.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes. All righty, up next, uh, gonna have just a little bit of discussion on, uh, the garbage proposals for twenty-four through twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-eight. Um, as you all know, Waste Management, uh, their contract ends the end of this year. And so I will also tell you, I have spoke to Waste Management, I have emailed them, that I gave them till the close of business on Friday, last Friday, to get us their proposal, nothing. Absolutely nothing, and I also called another service before, I called Wallace, and, uh, they're just like, we're, we're too busy, we can't take on any more clients at all. So I did talk to a boss, supposedly they came to finance, and, um, just to, uh, kind of, and then I also did put it out on Facebook, to kind of get a consensus of what the people want. And there's a lot of people that's not happy with Waste Management at all, and, uh, I, I've only had one issue with them when they didn't pick up the garbage, but, I mean, talking to other people, other people have stopped me at the dollar store. Gas station telling me, all sorts of things that has happened, and it's just mind-boggling. And, uh, so, another thing that was, was also was brought up was about the city doing its billing. I did talk to Wallace today, and, um, they had mentioned that they are more, they will do the billing for the city. The only thing that they ask is that they ask for a list of names, you know, so that everybody can, can have the garbage service, we did that with Waste Management, so we can do that with them. And, uh, also, when there is times to where people don't pay, then we can kind of, you know, be that liaison between what Wallace and, and the person not paying this thing. So kind of getting in there and say, hey, if, you know, if, you know, John Smith didn't pay, we can kind of say, hey, what's going on, you gotta have your garbage service. But you can understand it can kind of be an overbearing with them. One thing that Tanya and Angel had, had both mentioned too, when they do the city billing, is, is the extra workload that they would have to do on, you know, transferring the money. Because if we get it added to the garbage bill, yes, everybody gets one bill, but then also, uh, they have to move that dollar amount into the, you know, recycle help and garbage, and it ended up in the pan. So it is kind of an extra layer. Another thing that's kind of was added, so let's say we got six hundred people that, you know, take the garbage service, but let's say five hundred and seventy-five people pay, that twenty-five people, so do we still have to end up paying, you know, Wallace for it? Where do we make up that difference of the twenty-five that in? So I, I have no problem with it being them doing the billing, they said that they will be more than happy to do it. I know it's a little bit of a mix on it, you know, from online, a lot of people did like to have the two bills, uh, two bills, a lot of people also like to have the one bill. So these are just some things that we just need to talk about, um, so that we, I want everything wrapped up and done in, um, October. And for that, having it done, so then when we do, you know, cut off Waste Management, basically, people that have automatic billing has time to roll over to, to Wallace, is my line of thinking. So, go ahead, John.
We still have commercial dumpsters?
Yes, yes, they will.
We would save about three hundred and sixty dollars a year or more for billing to Wallace.
Yeah, and, uh, so we don't, it'll be forty-five dollars for dumpsters, but he didn't, but for, just to kind of give you a broad overview, for year one, it'll be eighteen dollars plus a three percent fuel charge. Anytime that gas or diesel fuel will be over three dollars and twenty-five cents a gallon, so you're looking at about fifty-four cents. Uh, year two, which would be twenty twenty-five, would be eighteen fifty a month plus three percent fuel charge. Year three, which is in twenty twenty-six, would be eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents a month plus a three percent fuel charge. Uh, year four, twenty-five seven nineteen twenty-five a month plus three percent fuel charge, and year five, which is twenty twenty-eight, nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents plus three percent fuel charge. This also includes recycling as well, so if you get recycling already from, uh, Waste Management, you'll often also continue to get recycling from them as well. Uh, one of the plans that he had mentioned, uh, he is a smaller business, he will do the town, uh, twice, he'll have to divide in half, so like on Thursdays, will be one end of town, Fridays will be the other end of town. Recycling will be picked up, uh, twice a month, uh, on Mondays, so there's a little bit of some adjustments there.
Okay, I got a question. You're saying having the city be the liaison between them and the customer?
Yeah.
You're not talking about if they don't pay their bill, we shut their water off?
No, we're not talking about that.
Because I know you did that with the fines, if they don't pay the fines, you shut the water off.
We did, yes, and if, if the city went in with the billing, then we would have to. What, one of the, what I was kind of was talking about with that, so currently, right now, Wallace, with them being a small business, they basically, their office only works, uh, Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. So if there's a problem, we can have, you know, call up the City Hall and say, hey, Janet can take that information, work on it, you know, on that Thursday, give them on Friday. So, and, and then also Brent Wallace, who's the owner, he did mention he will do the assumption route to what I spoke to him today, so.
I saw your poll on Facebook. The reason garbage trucks are on the roads and not in alleys no more is because our water mains are in the alleys.
You're exactly right.
The alleys are not as thick, can't handle as much as the roads, and as far as garbage cans being in the way, being in danger to vehicles driving, they're supposed to be only on the street side on pickup day.
On pickup day, you're right.
They're not supposed to be left out there twenty-four seven, they're supposed to be taken back up to your house, not left out there by the road. A lot of people don't want to listen to that, and.
Yeah, you're, you're right, I mean.
He made it, but when it was clear that alleys was not.
He, he did, he made, yeah, causing this truck.
We would have to go down alley, trim every single tree.
Yeah.
Well, he said, a lot of them is.
A lot of them dip down and then they'll hit that bottom of their truck, yeah.
There, there was no discussion.
No, no, you're absolutely right, it's, it's been brought up, I mean, I had a phone call after, it's like, I want, I want alley service back, your neighbor, and it's like.
Would we have to move stuff around from the knotty dumpster, or would they still go down that particular area?
Well, that alley is actually.
Yeah, it's, it's actually considered a road.
It's called Street B.
Oh, oh, that's right, that's right, I forgot.
But it's actually, there's concrete and asphalt and everything in the alley behind Main Street, so.
Okay, so that was okay, okay, perfect.
They're picking it up now, they're not gonna change.
Well, that's what I figured.
They'll do whatever.
My alley is highway today.
Yes, it is. All right, so I just wanted you all to know, I know, you know, probably everybody's just attended, so I at least wanted to fill you in on what we got, but that is the proposal, so.
One of the things that he did say was, it would include one for garbage and one for recycling, and if you wanted more than that, it would be an additional ten dollars.
Yes.
Per, uh, per tote, so.
He, he will pick up garbage that's on the ground, but cannot make it an everyday, you know, every week occurrence, you know, if you're week after week, you're like, hey, you're putting your garbage in the ground, then we're, we're gonna get after you, the city, so. But anyway, I just wanted to let everybody be aware of that, is what's going on, and, and like I said, I, I gave good intentions with Waste Management, and that hurt nothing, so.
So as far as the city enforcing it, like if he calls and says, hey, these twenty people haven't paid their trash bill, does that go in with the ordinance violations stating that you have to have trash?
Yes, that's my intention.
So it's treated as an ordinance violation?
Yes, you're absolutely right. Go ahead, Gary.
Well, the other thing you did mention too is their Waste Management currently has a thing in their contract where every bill, it's basically every building, like the library is required to pay for garbage services.
Correct.
And they literally have, Anna told us.
Yeah.
It's because of how the ordinance is worded, that every.
So under, so Wallace, we brought that up at finance, and he said, he's, you know, he's not worried about that, so like if the library wants to discontinue theirs, throw their one bag in the city dumpster, he's fine with that. So I, it will save some of the tax agencies a little bit of money, you know, like the library and things like that.
Do they have the roll-off dumpsters, or would we have to get them from somewhere else?
That I honestly don't know, I'll find out for you.
Totes? I think Steve's next name, is that what you're asking?
No, he's talking about big dumpsters. Right, yeah. We, we talked about dumpsters, but I don't think we talked about that, I, I will find out for you. Okay, moving on, uh, motion, next, next, we have a motion to approve an ordinance adopting and improving an amended assumption tax increment financing redevelopment plan and related redevelopment project for the proposed amended redevelopment project area of the city of Assumption, Christian County, Illinois. This is part of the, uh, expanding our TIP district to the new ground for, uh, potential subdivision. We have a motion to approve that, please.
I'll make the motion, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
And that's ordinance eight hundred?
Yes, I'm sorry, ordinance number eight hundred.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes. All righty, up next, we have a motion to approve the ordinance adding additional parcels of property to the assumption tax increment financing, financing redevelopment project area of the city of Assumption, Christian County, Illinois. That is ordinance number eight oh one. Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Nelson?
No.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes. All righty, next, we have a motion to approve the ordinance adopting tax increment financing for the amended redevelopment project area for the city of Assumption, Christian County, Illinois. That is ordinance number eight oh two.
I made that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Nelson?
No. Okay, up next, we have a motion to approve the Chastain invoices. First thing that we have, we have the ordinance, uh, invoice number forty-five, sewer separation phase two for thirteen thousand two hundred and ten dollars and sixty-one cents. Invoice number fifty-five for water improvement phase one EPA loan for a hundred and sixty-two dollars. Ordinance number, uh, sorry, invoice number seven six four four point oh one dash one four, water system improvements phase two for one thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Invoice number seven six four four point oh two, water system improvements phase two, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Invoice number seven six four four dash three eight, water improvements for the water plant addition, nine thousand six hundred and one dollars and nine cents. Invoice number eight four nine three dash oh oh, advisory services, one thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, forty-three cents, for a grand total of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and four dollars and ninety-two cents. See a motion to approve the, that, please?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes. All righty, uh, Ron was not able to make it, for one, with his, uh, he didn't really have too much to add, so he typed up the report for me to read for the record. To just kind of let you know, for project number, uh, six eight eight six, the sanitary sewer separation phase two, uh, Petersburg is continuing with the piping at Leefland Street Pump Station. Leefland Street has been temporarily closed and rerouted to allow sewer pipes crossing, uh, the road to be installed. Project number, uh, seven six four four point oh one and oh two, the water main and lead service line replacement, Petersburg plants immobilized during the week of September eighteenth to get everything started and going. And then project number seven six four four, the water treatment plant, EPA construction permitting is approved, the construction plans for bidding are over ninety percent complete, the work continues on the contract bid documents. Final equipment, technical specifications detailed, electrical plants, the HVAC and controls will all be completed then, so that is what we got going on from that. All right, next, we have public comments on non-agenda items. Marsha, if you want to, you can speak now, this is, uh, Marsha Webb, she is, uh, running for state representative against, uh, Republican Brad Albrook. So, uh, I've invited her to come and speak.
Thank you for the invitation. I am running on, on the Republican ticket. I'm gonna hand these out, please, have a little bit, if you look on the back, it's got some of my platform. Uh, I live in Macon, I'm a former first responder, I started in Parney and Ness in nineteen eighty-five, so I just pulled my age, you guys. I, I recently retired from that in September of twenty-two, I'm currently a deputy circuit clerk in Macon County. And I grew up in Sullivan, Mulford County, so, and then living in Macon, my heart's with the small towns and more rural communities. And the need is there, it's the, the need for some fresh ideas, fresh energy and fresh passion to take your voices to the State House. I support the Second Amendment, I'm in favor of avoiding the void card. I'm in favor of avoiding the void card as long as the background checks stay in place. Cause gotta make sure that they're not getting in the wrong hands. Restore parental rights. I, I don't know if many of you are familiar with that, but the parents are having less and less say of what's going on with their children in the schools and the curriculum that they're being taught. So, those rights need to go back to the parents. School choice. Smaller communities are, are blessed to have good schools. I know Meridian's has good schools, Anne's good. But some of the larger schools, um, throughout Illinois as a whole, only 3% to 9% of third graders can academically perform at their grade level. And that's unacceptable. So school choice. As a parent, you should be able to take your child and put them in any school, whether it be another public school, parochial school, private school, or homeschool, and the tax dollars, instead of being attached to the school, it needs to follow the child. And I honestly believe if that were to happen, that these failing schools, the ones that are failing, they would turn around drastically and quickly. It says make adoption affordable. Um, the abortion issue is never gonna be solved, it's too divisive. But Illinois, uh, our tax dollars have, is what's funding it, and Illinois has now become the abortion capital of the Midwest. We have people coming from other states, and our tax dollars are paying for that. So what I propose to do, when elected, I'm going to write a bill, find my poll sponsors, and I'm gonna fight for that bill, and that's to take 50% of the tax dollars that is set aside for the abortion and move them over here and make adoption free in Illinois. I know several couples that they have to fundraise to be able to adopt a child, because adoption is so expensive. Protection of farmers' land rights, eminent domain. There's already some of it, and there's more of it coming. A farmer should have the right to say what to put on his land and whether he wants to sell his land. Are any of you familiar with the WOTUS? The waters, the waterway eminent domain?
I, I have heard of that, yeah.
Yeah, so you have a farm, you have a creek running through it, he don't own that creek. The government owns the water. So it's things like that. I mean, it's an infringement on your property owner, your farmer's rights, landowner rights. That has to stop, that has to be reversed. And my big one. Term limits. I took the term limit, US Term Limit Fledge, it's a national organization, and each state has their own. So US Term Limit, Illinois Term Limit Fledge, I took that pledge. When elected, at the most, four terms, eight years. I'm done. There's no question about it. I will be done. We cannot have representatives in office as a career. Our founding fathers, if there was a reason, they put that in there. We were not meant to make a career out of it. We were meant to serve our community, serve our country, serve our state, and then go back home. And back into the private life. And that's one of the reasons that the pension system is broke at this point, the state pension system, so. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
What does a school choice plan look like to you?
To me?
Yeah.
What I would like is, okay, so per student, the schools get so much state funding per student. So that money should be attached to the student, not the school that they're enrolled in. Right now, it goes to the schools. Okay, and so if you pull your child out, that's all on you. You don't have any tax credits, that money doesn't follow the child, because your child lives in that school district, and that's where that money stays. I want the money to follow the child.
So then if you have a school, like, a school's in Decatur, like, how, how, how would that work? You know, if everybody wants to go to Eisenhower, how do you? Is there a waiting list? Is that what a school choice looks like?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know. I, I don't know if there would be a mass exodus from, from one to the other, whether that would create a waiting list. I, that's, that's a good question, and I appreciate that, because I haven't reached out to, you know, the, the larger city schools to ask that question. But I know a lot of, a lot of parents are wanting to put their children in different schools, whether it be parochial, but they can't.
It's cost prohibitive.
Something with that too is out-of-district fees. You have to have, you have to have out-of-district fees looked at, because like, if you're not within the district and you want to put your kid in there, it's like.
It's tuition.
Yeah, you have to pay tuition, and it's, it's a heavy.
But would they, if the tax dollars didn't stay at the school you're taking your child out of, and calling the child to that school?
You have different school districts. You still have a school district, your tax plate could go wherever, but, you know, like if I wanted to, if I could and I wanted to put my kid in paint, uh, they're gonna go, you don't have a paint address, you gotta pay out of there. So, you know, you have to look at.
Alright, you, you got something you want to say?
I have a question. Uh, next weekend, 16th, that's when the Sloans thing is?
Yes.
It, uh, we also have a Jeep run coming into town that weekend. Are there any blocked, um, things in front of Sloans? Do I need to route the juice somewhere else?
So they never said anything to me. Did you know David?
I don't think, as far as I know, they're not blocking the street.
Okay, so they can come in, they're coming from, well, I assume Bethany, but the last time we had a run like that, we took up.
Just be aware of the black talk, you know.
Yes, and I, I'm assuming they're saying up this side.
Yeah.
Okay, so if they do, old, if you want, you'd be okay with that?
I think, oh, yeah. I'll find out, I'm sure, and I'll let you know.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Yeah, so on Bob's topic in the first public section about the weed issue. So like, there's a process, like, you're not supposed to get like just letter after letter after letter. You're supposed to start getting fines. So how, like, so are we gonna move to the process of following the ordinance that says?
Yeah, I mean, I will tell, I mean, so I can, I'll, uh, tomorrow morning, I know the three that I sent the latest letters to, I'll go and check them out, and then I'll tell Jackson and Brian to go do it.
Yeah, cause like, if one.
But, but then I get excused, I have the excuse, but they'll come and they'll come into my house, but yeah, go ahead.
But even with that though, I mean, an ordinance is an ordinance, and if you told them this is a violation, you're gonna get a fine. You know, if they get three, four letters, they're gonna be like, well, there's no point, this isn't being taken seriously. So it's like, maybe it's gonna take a fine.
Yeah, you know, I think you're absolutely right. I will say, it's a very small number that this will pay. Uh, but yeah, I think we probably have to get to it.
Not even with just the weed, it would be other stuff too, you know, but, you know, anything, like, you know, animals or junk cars or, you know. If you don't start actually giving out fines, then it's like, who's gonna take it seriously?
Oh, you're, it's a good point. Do that. Alrighty, anything else? You got anything? Get a motion for the jurist?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you got a second though? Alright, all the jurors say aye? Aye.